Information, so Mr. Casey has agreed to go from a full member of the Waterways Committee to an, sorry, Mr. Dempsey has agreed to go from a full member of the Waterways Committee to an alternate member, and Mr. Casey, who had been an alternate member, is going to a full member of the Waterways. And that seems to have everything working in a good part.
The, uh...
Channel eighteen?
Channel eighteen?
On the channel eighteen appointment, Mr. Chairman, the, on my memo of October sixteenth, I'm recommending that Ms. Jamie Lee Goodwin be designated as the director. And as per the charter, I make the appointment and then ask for a vote of three members, at least three members of the Board of Selectmen to confirm that appointment.
I move we confirm the appointment.
It's already in the...
It's already in the...
It's in the concern.
It's in the agenda.
So, if there's no, if there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jamie.
Hey, Jamie!
Yay! Stand up so we can see you. I have to stand. Excuse me. We will now do some presentations from a number of the committees, starting with the Voter Information Committee.
Good evening, I'm Chris Joyce, I'm the newly-elected Chair of the Voter Information Committee, taking, well, never being able to, but Joanne Mrs. Place. You asked that we focus on future plans. You have our written report, I'm sure, in front of you. Joanne is going to be the committee's lead for a November nineteenth televised program featuring Cape Cod Tech, and the focus of that discussion will be on the budget and maybe one or two other initiatives that Cape Cod Tech has on their agenda. And probably next month also, we're hoping Larry Ballantyne and Linda Cibula will encourage our citizens on channel eighteen to apply for vacant committee seats. April, we're planning two programs, a pre-town meeting to highlight major articles that'll be on the warrant, and we'll also, of course, invite the appropriate reps to speak to those articles. And we're going to have a meet-the-candidate's night. We know there are two Board of Selectmen vacancies that may come up, or will come up, Water Commissioner and two Monomoy Regional School Districts, so we will have a meet-the-candidate's night. And we also plan to ask Jamie, as Director, to set up a series of kind of replaying 2012's program, Step Up and Run for Office again, an effort to encourage people not only to run for office, but also get involved on, in communities, committees. That was a program from November 2012 with Shirley Gomes, Tom Blute, and Mary Ward. And lastly, we continue our work to recruit new members to the Voter Information Committee, and part of that will be also to encourage maybe Cape Cod Tech student to join us. So, we'll, we'll work with Mr. Sanborn on that. Questions?
No, thank you. You sound like you have a good program.
I think so.
You know, and I, and I hope they do a good job.
Oh, they will. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next we move to the Water Quality Task Force.
Mr. Chairman, while Mr. DeBacher is going to the phone, the microphone, I'll just comment that Peter's going to wrap in the Citizens Advisory Committee into his presentation. That committee's been basically defunct for the last year and has rolled into the committee. And so, I'll set the stage, and part of his broad discussion will be that aspect as well.
I think we did such a good job, they didn't share open. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Selectmen. For the record, my name is Peter DeBacher, and I'm the Chair of the Water Quality Task Force Waste Water Management Subcommittee. It's a large program, forty years plus, two hundred million dollars, two hundred million dollars plus. I had prepared a forty-five-minute presentation, but I managed to get it down to five. I believe that the following eight topics represent the highlights for the upcoming year 2014. To bring you up to date on the status of the draft Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan, earlier in the year, the Water Quality Task Force submitted the draft CWMP, and CDM Smith has received questions from both MIPA and the Cape Cod Commission. Currently, we're waiting for a report from the Waste Water Implementation Advisory Committee so that we can incorporate their cost recovery model and incorporate it in our report. In addition, we need to incorporate some information with respect to greenhouse emissions and answer some smaller issues as well. Taken together, we expect submission of our responses of the questions that were asked by MIPA and CCC by the beginning of 2014. MIPA and the Cape Cod Commission will then do their follow-up reviews and a process that could take up to two or three months. After that, they will have a public hearing about the updated CWMP, the draft CWMP. And then, we either get an approval, or they will ask additional questions, and we have to repeat that process to some extent again. The second item of action in 2014 is a request for the acquisition of the ten-acre recharge site in East Harwich. The reason why that's sort of important is, it isn't our plan, it is private property at this point, if we can't secure it one way or the other, we don't have the long-term opportunity to acquire that. Where we stand with respect to that issue, we've set the wheels in motion to acquire the ten-acre site in East Harwich to get that going. We had a meeting where the Real Estate and Open Space Committee with respect to that issue. I got a detailed map from CDM Smith, and we will soon be meeting with the property owner of that area so that we can discuss where that ten-acre site could be located to the best of his wishes and our wishes. Following that, we will set a series of meetings, public hearings, title searches, property assessments, et cetera, and we'll do our due diligence. We will be working with the Real Estate and Open Space Committee to make sure that is done properly and in the correct sequence. After that is done, the REOS and the Water Quality Task Force, we will request the Board of Selectmen to move ahead and place an article on the warrant for the required funds. Obviously, it's not a free site to get. It's a very important issue, we need to secure that we have it available if need be in the future. Second item that we need to pursue is funding requests for the May 2014 town meeting. Later in this year, we will request funding for a number of projects, and you're already familiar with the fact that we have been sort of alerting people that those funds are needed. The first one is the Muddy Creek culvert construction, and by the way, the twenty-five percent design review of that culvert, that bridge, will take place this Thursday at the Chatham Community Center at seven PM, and you might be interested in participating there. We also need to ask for funds for the continued participation with CDM Smith for Phase Two. This time, we need to be very careful when we ask for a contract for that phase, that we properly define what is in scope, out of scope. We have some issues where a lot of, a lot of peripheral issues are being asked from CDM Smith. We will ask for funds, and again, you are familiar with that notion that we need to do that, the attenuation study for the Harwich Conservation Trust, Bank Street Boggs, and others. That's the attenuation to reduce the nitrogen loading in the town. And then finally, the Hinckley's Pond remediation, that has been on the agenda for, for a while as well, and that is not a nitrogen issue, that is a phosphorus issue, and that sort of ties it with the 124 road construction as well. And I have plans to, pretty soon, to have discussions with the Board of Selectmen, I think informally, I've talked to you about it, the Finance Committee and the Capital Outlay Committee. The Waste Water Implementation Advisory Committee, it is our understanding that the cost recovery model will be available to the Board of Selectmen in the near future, not quite sure when, but we need a copy of that report so that we can incorporate it in our response to MIPA and the CCC. The fifth issue that we need to deal with is the acceptance by Chatham of East Harwich wastewater. We've had an inter-municipal agreement of sorts, but that issue has not been put to bed yet, I understand that, they don't, you know, they're proper dues for what we're sending over there, and I understand that. I read in the paper that that could be between six months and two years. That seems a bit long to be left in the lurch, if you know what I mean, saying so. Water Quality Task Force membership, I would like to invite that young lady to, to help us on that issue, because having a quorum at the Waste Quarter Task, Waste Water Quality Task Force has been truly problematic, to say the least. If I try to get new, new members on our committee, with very little luck. Our best option might be at some point when the CAC or the WIAC have done their job to bring in some members from those teams, they are fully familiar with the programs, and they have some very smart people on that committee. This may be a good time to, because that's my thanks to the members on my committee who are not here tonight, but two have been very diligent participants, Dr. Scan Coquart and Donette Gonzalez. Also, Heinz Proft has been, has been at every meeting, and I want to thank him as well. Also, Bob Owens, a longstanding active member, he resigned from our committee once, apparently, I don't know why, but he wants to spend more time in Florida. Outreach, Harwich and the Cape Cod Commission, we've joined forces to develop a superior outreach program. As you know, they've gotten some money to do all sorts of outreach, and they have selected Harwich with their draft CWMP in their hands now to, to make us their poster child, if you want to. So, we're using their resources, both in terms of dollars, manpower, expertise. We're developing, I wouldn't say we jointly with outside help, a database and a questionnaire for which external professional marketing people will contact Harwich residents with relevant questions regarding the wastewater issue. And to prime that pump, if I may bore a phrase from lawyer Ballantyne, I'd like to take this opportunity to ask the residents of Harwich to not hang up when they get a call from CAC with respect to that survey. It's a very important call, and it will sort of impact your purse strings in the next couple of years. And we expect this activity to begin in about a month's time. Upon completion of that survey, we'll begin a coordinated outside outreach campaign that we will run parallel with the approval and the implementation of the CWMP. So, if the, if the schedule has to change a little bit of one or the other, that's okay, as long as the two move on in tandem with the right message at the right time to get the program going. Separately, we are evaluating how and when Harwich wastewater information could be included and maybe town billings, such as a water bill or a tax bill, we're still struggling with that issue a little bit. And finally, we, we need to update and enhance our website of this group here, and we hope to do that pretty soon as well. That's about, I think you need to know, in a nutshell, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. Any questions?
No question, just a comment. Peter and his committee, committees have been, done a lot of work on this, a lot of detailed discussions, and so they need to be applauded. I think, as Peter also inferred, that in the next month or so, we need to start thinking about reformulating or reformatting the, the committees as we move forward, because it'll be a perfect stage of, of, the implementation committee's work will be done, we'll be moving into the second phase of the CWMP, the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan, which has its own requirement in terms of committee support, monitoring, we have to show that those assumptions we made in the CWMP turn out to be correct through actual data, facts.
That'd be nice.
They'll make Linda happy, facts. And so, it'll be time to relook at that. But it's been a, it's a huge job, and thanks to their group and the CW and Smith, we are, the feedback we get from the Cape Cod Commission is, every meeting I'm at, we're, we're meshing this being the, the community that's done it right, moving forward, so we need to keep doing that.
Yeah, and thank you for mentioning CDM Smith, because they do all the work, we just guide them. Yeah, thank you. Larry, just one other question, the, when are we going to get the report from the Implementation Committee? I thought we do...
They're scheduled, they're, they're on the agenda, or they're going to ask, be on the agenda the twenty-eighth, so next week.
Okay.
They, they're mailed last week, and they are meeting again on Monday, and follow-up on Tuesday if necessary, they're, they're almost there on their report.
That's terrific. Thank you very much.
If I may, just one correction, I, I know the paper is always correct, and I see paper, but the idea of the intermunicipal agreement with Chatham of six months to two years, I'm not exactly sure where that comes from, because that timeframe is actually what we set it to be. We've, have a letter of agreement now of, memorandum of agreement that we're interested in talking to each other. We actually, their lawyers taking the first crack at that, but, but neither town has pulled the plug to move that forward. And, and we don't have a lot of incentive to rush that until we get basically into the next phase of the CWMP, so we know what our schedule is better. We're trying to get all the, our homework done and have it in place so we can trigger that when we want to, but there, there hasn't been a timeframe described, either minimum and maximum timeframe at this point.
Okay, good.
And I, I'll ask Bob, he's been talking with their town administrator as well, but I think that's a correct statement.
That's my understanding, Mr. Ballantyne, that the attorneys are reviewing the document to then be presented to the two boards for review, and I not heard that there would be six months. I had heard that you might be within the next thirty days be receiving some type of documentation for review, not adoption, but review.
Again, it's up to, it's up to us, we could ask for it thirty days, we could ask for it six months, a year, we're, we're, we're actually in charge of triggering that.
Great. There's no old business tonight. How will you handle the new business?
Mr. Chairman, the, just to give a little history, on October fourth, we were, the town was notified that there were some significant revisions to a document that this board had signed with CEVAC and with the installer for the solar panels for Harwich. The, we immediately sent those to our attorney, compliment of page, John Giorgio, who was the point person, he assigned it to an attorney, Rick Holland, for review. He did expect that I would have an answer by tonight for you to consider and then adopt or not adopt. The review had gone on, and I had a more than hour conversation with Mr. Holland last Thursday, where he outlined for me a series of concerns that he had in the changes, and we talked about that, he was then, he, Mr. Holland, was then going to go back to the CEVAC attorney, Ms. Audrey Edelman, to review whether changes could be made. We find at three o'clock this afternoon that our attorney has said that CEVAC has determined that there will be no changes, that what you have is what you must adopt. So, what I'm proposing this evening is that I, again, talk with Mr. Holland and get a listing for you of what those changes and what this additional liability is going to be that the town would be assuming. Some, I believe we could accept, some, I think there should be some discussion on. But my understanding now is that CEVAC and the attorneys for CEVAC have stated there will be no changes in what we are reviewing. So, what we have is what we'll get, and you either accept it or don't accept it. Now, Mr. Cole has said, is here this evening, he represents you on CEVAC, he may have some other information, and also the attorney for, I think, I'm sorry, the chairman for CEVAC is, is here, if...
Linda?
Just a quick question. I guess I hadn't understood that they were significant changes, I thought they were modest.
You were correct, that is, that was my initial understanding until I talked to Mr. Holland last Thursday afternoon, and he informed me there were some, in his opinion, some additional significant changes where the town's liability was being increased. And I wasn't, at that time, Thursday afternoon, I asked if he would please go back to the attorneys, plural, for ACE construction and for CEVAC, to see if some of the wording could be changed to make us a little more comfortable. And the answer at three o'clock this afternoon was no.
And, and if we, as a town, don't agree to these changes, what happens?
Mr. Cole and, and others may want to provide you with that, but my understanding is, either we sign it as is or we don't sign it. If we don't sign it, the project does not go forward.
And, and I hopeful, hopefully, we're going to hear a discussion either tonight or in the very near future as to why these changes are coming after two years of dancing around with this project?
The explanation I was given was that the financing for the project, or the financiers for the project have asked for the changes in light of new language was, which was put into a contract in the town of Dennis and some other communities. So, the financier, seers wish to have that same language in all of the CEVAC contracts.
And, and that's part of my question, I guess, is, the reason of the reluctance to adopt our language is they want the same language for all the towns?
Yes, sir.
And Dennis got their language in first, so we have, we only...
You adopted the language, which you were presented with some modifications, you did what you needed to do to make the...
So mechanically, they don't want to have separate languages for each town in this issue.
They have chosen, the financiers, again, this is my opinion, have chosen to make the changes and have asked you now to accept those changes that others have made.
Larry?
So, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Just to be clear, if I read Mr. Holland's email to you correctly, we have to sign this if we're going to sign it by November fourth, right?
Yes, sir.
So, it can be dealt with.
We have time.
Next week.
We hope next week would be the best.
And I think that you, I think what I heard you say is that towns like Dennis, for instance, have agreed to the language that is being proposed to us, is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Larry? It turns out that while the CEVAC Round One development has been underway with American Capital Energy, that ACE was also dealing outside of CEVAC with Dennis, and this lang, with, and ACE was using the same financiers, and some different language came out of the Energy Management Services Agreement in Dennis. And by the way, their town council is Mr. Giorgio, who's been intimately involved all the way, and my understanding was that he, he himself had no problems with these language changes, but as Mr. Lawton said, it was assigned to a Mr. Holland. It turns out that Mr. Holland agreed to the identical language in Dennis, that is, in the documents that were sent to you. So, part of this, the reason, after all this time, that these, as I understand it, are largely lawyerly, lawyerly terms, and I'm not going to attempt to try to explain any of them, but with me this evening, in case you have questions, knowledgeable about the background, is a Harwich resident, Charlie McLaughlin, who is currently the Vice President of CEVAC and was the President and is an attorney and is a representative for the town of Barnstable and has kind of been present at the creation. Now, one other thing arose, and that is with the financiers, and that is, and I don't know how this translates into any liability for us, but there was no provision in the existing contracts for what to do in case CEVAC went out of business. And as I understand it, that is a routine consideration, it was not raised because of any fuss that's been made about, by anybody about CEVAC, that it was felt to be threatened. Now, on, and I think I would, I would, nobody wants to issue an ultimatum, but there is no question, but the way Mr. Lawton has explained it to you, is the situation. If you approve, the sooner you approve, the sooner ACE has a financial closing on the Harwich project per se, and then, as soon as it can be scheduled, a ribbon breaking. And if you decide to go that route, again, time is of the essence. ACE has until the thirty-first of December to spend fifty percent of the project money, and that can be achieved simply by ordering materials, but they're not going to go ahead and do that until the documents are signed. So, one other point with respect to if you approve, and of course, I hope you do, and that is, don't wait until you can get every dignitary at a, at a ribbon-cutting ceremony that you would like to have there. Let's do that when the power starts flowing, okay? So, as soon as one selectman is free and ACE is available, we can do it and get the work started. The other, the other point I would make with respect to the message that Mr. Lawton received is that the three parties, I think, I don't think they're sick to death of talking to one another, but I think the lawyers have been talking so long that they've come to the point where they don't think there's, there's any fruitfulness in doing further wordsmithing. I think you need to understand it in that spirit. There's no intent to say, take it or leave it, and if you don't like it, lump it. That's not the intent at all. Again, time is of the essence, and I, I understand and respect that Mr. Lawton wants to understand what the alleged additional liabilities to the town are. There's one we can point out, okay? There was no language previously in the agreement. Now, this is language from the EMS that spills over into the power sales agreement and into the project development agreement. There was nothing there to cover what happens if the town, through some, in, in, probably inadvertent, action materially damages the physical plant that's put in place, or puts something up that keeps the sun from shining on the panels. Now, clearly, if we do that, we deserve to be liable. Mr. Lawton thinks he's getting advice from the attorney that maybe we're, we're responsible if some third party does it. And I, I don't understand how that could be the case, but I'm, you know, this is, this is lawyerly stuff. So, that's all I have to say. I hope you can expedite it. If you have questions about the legal stuff, I think, and background, Charlie can add or correct what I've said, and Mr. Eric McLean, who's appeared before you, before, from ACE, is also here.
Larry? You may have referenced or referred to this, Larry, but I take your point on time being the essence, and of course, we've been trying to move this on for a couple of years because we've been looking for it in our...
Yes.
...in our budget.
I, I know, and I must say, from what I read in the paper, that February is premature.
Well, I wanted someone to explain to me this sentence, that we may request a delay of this project to June of, June thirty, two thousand and fourteen, is that suggesting that we can delay this another six months? Are you with me, the bottom, the...
Where's that?
Paragraph on the bottom of page two of the document says ACE may obtain an extension from DOE R to maintain qualification if it can chill, it has expanded fifty percent of the construction, and then it can delay the rest of it, and then it will not have until June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen? Does that, again, delay when we can expect to have financial help in, from this project? Are you with me?
Yep.
Yep.
If the...
I'd like to know that, because we've been looking at the operation, that impact in operating budget, and this looks to me like...
For this...
...it's an out for another six months before we would see that.
That Mr. McLaughlin may be able to answer that from a legal standpoint, or not.
I can't answer it. My, my, I, I think what's involved is if they meet the thirty-first deadline, okay, then they have some time to finish things, but Charlie can answer that, or Mr. McLean.
I'm hoping I'm misreading this, that this will delay us getting any financial part of this for another six months.
I think, I think that's exactly what that says, Larry, it's, it's...
Yep. Well, that's my fear. Well, that's my fear.
I think it's founded.
Good evening, Charles McLaughlin, Harwich resident. And as Larry's pointed out, I had the pleasure of missing a meeting and I ended up as president of CIVEC for the first five painful years. And it's been an experience. I was able to voice this under John Cheklik, who's now doing a great job and came in from, as Falmouth rep and a, a full career in, in this business. But let me answer that question. The, the, this has been an experience in lines drawn in the sand and changing rules as we've all progressed through it. A very dynamic area for the Commonwealth and frankly, at the federal level also in terms of relevant IRS rulings. And to, as to the December 31st and June 30th deadlines that have been talked about, the Department of Energy Resources, everyone, all of the developers, properly so because of the millions of dollars being invested in these projects, wanted a system of insurance, assurance in place that would protect their investments so that if they met certain guidelines and in the process, the state caps for municipal renewable energy projects were met somewhere in that stream of time, that the projects would nevertheless be qualified and be protected and have their place in the assurance under the, under the caps. What I'm specifically speaking about is for the NSTAR region in which we sit, there was a, originally a 2%, and then it was boosted to 3% of NSTAR's total energy usage would qualify for municipal renewable energy projects, such as this solar project. And in the process of, of doing that, there became frankly, an absolute gold rush of filings once DOE R got some sort of a queue set up. It took them an inordinate amount of time, frankly, an unreasonable amount of time, in my view, to, to create this so-called system of assurance. But the bottom line on it is that because of this gold rush, at one point, there was something in the range of approximately 300% of the available quota on, against that cap in pending applications that, that were filed in last fall. I know Eric has better figures than I do. But the, it's a long-winded explanation. As Hayden Greenholtz used to say, ask a lawyer the time and he'll tell you how to build a clock. But at, what we're trying to do here with DOE R's assistance is create a protective device such that if a developer puts 50% of the project's cost into equipment and other qualifying steps and does so by December 31st of this year, and if the project is up and operating by June 30th next, or if it's not operating, that the sole reason that it's not operating is because of NSTAR problems on, on their side of, of the switch, then the project is protected. And so I would defer as to actual scheduling questions to Eric, who's here. I don't want to say that this thing is necessarily extended to June 30th. I, I know I haven't seen their latest timelines. But part of that timeline is dependent on, on how quickly we act here. So long-winded answer to a simple question, or maybe not so simple question, but at the end of the day, there is a, a process involved to protect the developers and protect their place in the queue under these caps, these artificial caps that have been created by the legislature and for which this project is qualified. But to have it absolutely qualified and to know that those monies can be expended, millions of dollars be expended safely, there are these timelines to be met.
That, thank you. I, I think I understand that. Basically, it's an umbrella, some time post or umbrella. So I guess I'd ask Erica, what's the actual timeframe then?
Sure.
Because I think all our concern here is, is when would it be, when do we start seeing revenue from this, I guess, is our.
Eric McLean, American Capital Energy. It's nice to be in front of you again. I will echo that I hope you can move expeditiously. We're trying to start construction this season. So we would, we would begin construction almost right away. You know, if the, if the, if the board signs these documents, I will have people in the field, you know. We, we have to do a closing and then, you know, 10, 10 days later, we're in the field. We, we have a lot of equipment backordered. We have a lot of equipment ready. Our construction timeline is really only, this is going to be weather dependent because no, we're in New England and no one can ever tell what the winter months are. We wanted to start this construction project a long time ago, obviously, just like you did. But our construction timelines are four and a half, you know, five months max. And really, you know, we're anticipating four months right now. I will say that NSTAR really drives our schedule. They've driven it, I think the last time I was in front of this board, I gave you an update on why we were so delayed. And it's because NSTAR took 18 months for something by law that they have much shorter to do. NSTAR has been paid in full for Harwich's update, upgrades. So NSTAR has work that they have to do on their side of the meter. American Capital Energy paid that bill, I think, in, in Harwich. And don't, don't quote me on this, but I believe it's plus more than $300,000. We paid that bill in Jul, on July 5th of this year. So they, they collected that money and have begun work. And, and they drive, they will drive when we get connected. Having said that, we paid the bill July 5th of this year. So we anticipate that when we are done construction, we are hooked up and you are producing, you are saving revenue.
Linda, you wanted to make a comment?
Yes, I, I, so I guess the answer to Larry's original question that we could potentially be going, Larry Ballantyne, is, you know, that we could be getting into June of 2014 before we see any revenues from this. That was a yes, after that long-winded conversation. The answer to that is yes?
I think that's a fair statement. And again, that's dependent on.
So it's yes.
On the winter and the construction schedule.
So it's yes.
It's yes, with the caveat that we had hoped and certainly all of the advice we were trying to provide to municipalities was, don't budget it until the switch is thrown.
Well, we haven't budgeted it because we, we understand the NSTAR. I think we understand all the pieces. I was just trying to get to a yes or no answer, brief. I guess the other thing that I, I guess I can tell you that is, is disturbing somewhat, and hopefully it is to the rest of the board, is to be presented with something that you gots to sign now, or you're not going to have your project. And I must say that when, when did Dennis agree to this origin, this language change? Do you know the dating of that? Because here we are sitting here and I feel like we're backed against the wall.
Two-part answer to the, to a very important question and.
And a short answer?
Well, I'll try and, I'll give you the, I'll give you the correct answer and I'll make it as short as I can. And the, the correct answer is that both with regard to the ACE project, this is the 23rd hour, 59th minute. And I can assure you that nobody on the CIVEC board is at all happy that we're here. What has happened, though, is that these projects, for whatever reason, for a variety of reasons from the financing side, have faced major obstacles. And ACE is no exception. And we were informed only very recently that they had substituted financiers. And coming in at the last minute with, with folks who are concerned about their own set of analyses and the like. And, and the, the problem that we face, and I was going to make it in a more generalized comment, but the problem we face at CIVEC is, to, to quote one of the more recent business publications, at this point, done is better than perfect. And, and we apologize and we are as upset perhaps, maybe more so than you, at this last-minute change in financiers and the fact that we are simply running out of time. There are still caps to be met and other obligations. And the, the argument that I would simply make to you is, and I'll give my own example. I'm not counsel to Barnstable for this project. We've hired our own separate counsel, who also has done any number of projects off Cape. And his recommendation for the town of Barnstable is to go ahead and accept these. No one likes to be, including Barnstable, have, have these presented to us in a take it or leave it manner. But the truth of the matter is, we've got not just one town, but we've got seven towns. And there just simply isn't the time to go back and have every, with due respect to my, my brethren in the profession, start renegotiating these documents all of, we are out of time. There's no other way to put it and still get and have any hope of meeting these, these December 31st deadlines. So CIVEC took, the CIVEC board, and Larry and I attended last week, took a vote, you know, and knowing that it would not sit well and for which we apologize profusely. But the simple matter is, we don't have time on one town, never mind seven towns, to go back and, and reanalyze these documents. CIVEC council's done a superb job, spending an inordinate amount of time for the, several times over now with, with new council involved on the other side. They have now negotiated a, a document that most of the towns frankly, have already sent these to this Lockman with, with recommendations for approval. And, and I, I think to the point on the Dennis project, there, I'm told by our council, I haven't read or compared head to head, but the, the terms in, in the Harwich document are somewhat more favorable in some instances than the Dennis document. So all I can say is offer our apologies. We, we share your frustration and, and no one likes to be told, you got to sign it. Unfortunately, that is the message. You got to sign it and take advantage of this very significant financial benefit and trust that the lawyers have done the very best to protect you in the limited time available.
Excuse me.
Right, just, just one last, just Angela. And the date that Dennis made these changes was?
That I don't know, because we have not been involved at, at the CIVEC level.
Just trying to get to the answer to the question.
I don't recall the exact date and I apologize, but it was within the last 30 days. And we've mobilized to their site as of today.
I had a different question. I was told a few minutes ago that all the contracts for all the towns were going to be identical. And that's the reason for doing it. Because as far as I know, we signed a contract a while back that we thought was good for this town and protected the town. And now we're told we have to change it to be in sync with the other towns. And two seconds ago, you said, your verbiage is different than Dennis, so that's not true.
The, I'm not sure that it was presented as clearly. Dennis had its own deal outside of CIVEC from the get-go on this. We understand that the Dennis project is not identical in our respects. Within CIVEC, the documents will be, will be in our identical. For any town that signs, they, you will all be signing the same document. And as I say, I think of the seven towns, I think five have them pending in front of the board. Some have already been, I think, voted on in the last 24 hours or so, or last, last few days anyway. But suffice it to say that the board took the position very reluctantly. This is the document, we've got to have it signed.
The concern I have, when I read it, in addition to the change in dates, which is significant for us, there's a change in liability. There's liability shifts to us in all sorts of areas. And unless, from a legal standpoint, somebody can tell us how significant those changes are and what the impact is, I would rather forego the savings than, than have to live with, with not knowing what's going to happen. We signed a contract, we thought it was the contract that was the contract. And all of a sudden, two parties of the contract come in and say, excuse us, but we're changing the contract. Where does that come from?
And you don't have any choice but to accept. So what part of negotiating and contracts does this come from in, in the business law side? I'm a little confused on that point.
This came from our friends in the finance world, folks, over which we have no control. And the project as presented to us was with some very lengthy, hard-nosed, bullet point negotiations to get to the best document that CIVEC council could achieve in the very limited time available, having in mind that the clock is still ticking and these quotas are filling up. And the decision at the CIVEC level was to go back and say, you know, it's a pretty good document nonetheless. We don't like the process that got us here, but we, we're in good conscience coming back to the towns and saying, as is our counsel to Barnstable, and saying, you can live with it. Take it now. The contingencies that are involved that might conceivably down the line create some issue of liability are so rather remote, in my personal opinion and professional opinion, that to take this deal that is on the table now and realize the benefits of it against some remote contingency that there might possibly be some liability, I'm not going to get into the merits of it. That's why you've got your council and you've got to rely on your council. But I, I, again, between Mr. Giorgio and his associate, Mr. Giorgio has been very well respected and I think has signed off for all the towns, quite frankly. But you'll have to ask him that question, not me, so.
Okay, any other comments?
No, so. I'm going to, what I'm going to do is probably, I don't know whether he's available, but I'll have him do a summary. He and I went over it for.
Mr. Holland?
Yes, ma'am. And to make sure that we understand, because when I went over it with him for just under two hours, there were some concerns that he expressed about the language. Now, maybe it will never happen, but I think one, one of the items, as Mr. Cole pointed out, that I think we should accept liability if we, on our property, attempt to build something that's going to block the sun. There should be no question. But the language, at least according to our attorney, said, that's in the document is that we may have to have some, if not control, some type of responsibility for preventing others, like across the street, from building something. And he was concerned, well, how does that work? What, could there be some language changes that would ameliorate our responsibility for that? Now, if it's simply notification, sure. Planning board is presented with a plan for a 35-foot building. We notify American Capital and we're done. But we want to make sure that, once we notify, we have no liability in, in that.
Except our, our zoning bylaws, and I don't have them all memorized, may say that it's okay to have that building there.
Yes.
Which means we would then get sued by the person trying to build the building because we're in violation of our zoning bylaws. This is not.
We just want to make sure we know.
This is a little more complex than you gentlemen are trying to present it.
We only had two weeks really to look at it. If it, if it came on the, at least under my, my understanding, on the 4th in the afternoon of October. And it is now the 21st and I received, I had a conversation on the 17th. So we're talking about, about two weeks. So maybe we can get this done. My goal was to have it signed tonight, but with these issues, I think, one week, I think we can have for you at least the limit of your liability.
At least a list of what the issues are.
And with a recommendation on yes, as long, but I, my concern is if you don't know what you're signing, that I think is worse than signing something.
So then we can go read it, right?
Right, maybe we should pass it and then we read it, you know?
Oh, okay. That would be fun.
But then it'll be changed again.
Yeah, what, yeah, what is the, what is the, that it's not going to change again?
Well, once we sign it, we're done.
Can I, can I, can I ask a question, please? And I think, I think Eric, it might be, it's probably for you, because last time we, I think, six months ago or so, when we talked about the project, there was a whole issue of getting this thing started before the end of this calendar year, so that there are certain tax credit advantages, I believe, that were on the table. It's apparent that's not going to happen. So what then happens with those tax credits? So you just roll into next year or they go to, go away on your behalf?
The, the investment tax credit is still in effect next year. There's accelerated depreciation, accelerated bonus depreciation that ends this year. And, and our financiers in this project lost that benefit already. Or they haven't lost it yet, but it is likely they will. So, you know, I, I will stress that I, I understand all, all of your concerns. John Giorgio and Rick Holland approved this contract for the town of Dennis. So I, I, I just wanted to mention that again. And, and the financing market is what it is. It's, there's, there's, you know, if the town wants to see this benefit savings, I think once you read the documents, you'll see there is not that much more liability that would prevent the town from seeing these savings, you know, of, I think they're plus 300, $400,000 a year for the town.
300.
So.
Weighted against, you know, we need to, we need to understand the liability to us because we're responsible for signing this.
I, I completely understand.
And if something is in there that we don't, that is detrimental to the town. So I think we need to understand this. So I'm hoping Mr. Lottin, we can have that for next week.
Yes, ma'am.
Can that be agendaed?
We will put it on the agenda.
One thing on, on the building height next door, you have to remember the landfill is, you know, 30 or 40 feet above the rest of the elevation.
Understood.
So the building would have to be like a seven-story building, right, in, in, in reality.
You realize across the street is a, a tower, there are two towers.
Yes, and it doesn't, it, it doesn't affect us.
But, you know, if it's tall enough to put shade on it, then we're going to have a, a comment because you don't talk about how much shade, it gives shade. And I don't want to get involved with things like that. There is a, I don't know, 10-story tower or whatever.
I think, I think the change states that you simply need to notify us that someone's, because you're the abutter. You get the notification, someone's trying to build a 10-foot, 10-story, not us.
And then we, but there seems to be some issue over how the liability then becomes, is it ours, is it not? I think we need to understand this.
Well, let's get this list of issues and talk about it next week. And.
Then I will do.
I, I take it that CIVEC's not willing to participate in assuming some of these liabilities?
I'm sorry, S.
I mean, are, is CIVAC willing to participate with us in assuming some of the liabilities? I mean, are you, is SEVAC willing to participate with us in assuming some of the liabilities? Or you have to use your name after us?
I think what you need, I think what you need to do is what Mr. Lawton has proposed, that he's going to itemize for you between now and next week, what the Koppelman and Page attorney claims are the additional liabilities-
Okay.
-and what the likelihood of them is, and then, and then make a judgment. Nobody's pressuring you to vote tonight. Do it next week, one way or the other. You know, we have a 30-foot building height, unless you're down a restriction, unless you get some special permission or you're down on the waterfront and garan-, and grandfathered. And, and the landfill is already 50, or 30, 40, 50 feet above the surrounding land.
No pressure, just do it next week.
I got it.
Yes.
All right, can we, can we move on?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any other wonderful things to present to us tonight?
No, sir. I do not.
Thank God. We're into the town administrator's report. Let me just grab a piece of paper. I don't, you want to handle the dates, Bob, or you want me to go through this?
On the discussion concerning, you had asked me to contact Mr. Hooper to determine when and if a, a date could be chosen for a discussion before this board on Route 124. And he advised me this afternoon about 5 o'clock that November 18th would be a date when Vanessa Hangan-Bresslin could be here and others who would be necessary to make the presentation. And that is a, a Monday evening. We, in checking the advanced scheduling, we, you may have one or two committees in, but I will attempt to put any other business to a different day.
Yeah, the issue a couple of times is that the engineer isn't available and we played with other dates and we need to have him here.
Right, he can meet on Mondays, cannot meet usually any other evening, and the 28th and the 4th, you have very full agendas, those two evenings, right now. So the 18th would be acceptable and rather not get into the later, latter part of the month.
I think the other benefit is we should be able to do a good job pulling the right information together and nothing's going to happen to, to move the project ahead without the right information, so nobody's got to worry about what's going on. And I'd rather take an extra day and everybody walk out of the meeting, maybe not loving it or hating the project, but at least saying, "I understand what this is and we're all on the same page." Because I think that's where we have to get to.
So is the 18th acceptable, Mr. Chairman?
Well, we have to-
Yeah, I'd just say, Ms. Chairman, we, we alluded to it before, I guess, and that is if the board will indulge me to round up these gentlemen, if you will, and try and clarify the presentation and whatnot. Maybe I'll be the presenter, I don't know. But I, I think it will take us a while to put it in layman's terms, quite frankly.
I think so.
Because, I mean, I, I need time to look at it and spend some time with it. Bob and I are going to try and get together with Link on Thursday if we can-
Yes, sir.
-this week and get the process started. You know, but-
I think that's important.
It, it's a good date because it gives some time. It also is before Thanksgiving, any later where people start bailing out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm really thrilled, Peter, that you have volunteered to do this, to put together something that might be-
So I can sit there and everybody can throw rocks at my, my back.
So everybody can throw rocks at you. You got it. We'll bring our tomatoes.
We'll bring our targets for it.
But the point is, I think, as we all, we all learned last week, that there's a lot of misunderstanding. I'm not saying anybody's right or wrong or anything else, but there's just different things you hear and, and things that you look at, then you see it, then you say, "Whoa, you know, what about this? What about that?" So we owe it to our, we owe it to everybody, you know, to try and clarify this. And, and then we may decide in the end to keep it just the way it is, don't do anything, who knows what, you know?
Yeah. I, I, I think it's important for everybody to understand exactly what is going on. And then you can agree either to like it or not like it. But if we're talking about different things, we can never get to any kind of consensus at all. I think that's important. So-
Rachel, Bob, we got to get this done.
Yes, sir.
We will have, that will be posted as a, as a-
It must like to be on the 18th, if, depending on what else is on the agenda right now, it'll be a workshop meeting so that you'd have time and you wouldn't have pressures of other items on your regular agenda.
I think that's good.
So basically have the 18th be basically a Route 124 meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Consent to things.
This, and some, yeah.
Yes.
Some little stuff.
But keep it, keep that, this is the, the, this would be the agenda for that evening.
Yes.
And it would include public participation? Yes, no?
I would, I would think so.
Why wouldn't?
Yes.
Yes. Just want to make sure.
Boy, you could have a public and not invite, we want to invite public.
I, I think, I think from my perspective, I'd like to see the presentation made and then, you know.
I mean, if I could, I think the, the, I think the format needs to be, that we're allowed to make the presentation and then open up for comments and questions afterwards. And, and I would hope we wouldn't, you know, kind of degenerate into either shouting match or whatever, but be civil about it and deal with the facts.
Yeah, well, I think you're going to get questions both from this board-
Yeah, yeah.
-as well as from, from the public, because there are questions that we all have.
Yeah.
It's one of the reasons we wanted to wait until this timeframe to, to do something. Okay? And we'll, we'll structure it and make sure everybody's happy with it.
I'll go on that basis then.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to give you a paper that I mentioned earlier. Also, I feel that by, I would say tomorrow or the next day, I will have a pretty good package of what's needed on 124 and a cost. It's been a hard job getting it. I've been 19 years out of the business, although I've been doing volunteer work for the town of Yarmouth. I graded roads with water problems. I graded Dennis, Brewster, and Eastham. I would be willing to work with this or work on the project at no cost to the town. And I will make sure that you get this information, this will be complete by hopefully tomorrow, if I may.
Please give it to, please give it to Bob and-
And could I also ask, Mr. Rainey, if, if during the course of our putting together this presentation, if we had any questions or whatnot on your information, could we call you? Is that okay? Or contact you?
This information would be what I feel, Albert Rainey, with my experience, to correct the drainage problem that we have at this time on 124. It would probably start at Hinkley Road. It will not affect the Cape Tech. I think that should be an article because it's a sophisticated project. We did it on Wichmea Harbor a few years ago. Marty Moran and I, we took all the road from, road water from 28 to the harbor and put it out in Wichmea Harbor. And it was clean.
Okay, my, my question-
Now, that should be a-
Yeah, my, my question though was, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but when you give us the information and we're digesting it-
Yeah.
-and, you know, it, it sounds like, you know, we want to include it as an option certainly in the presentation.
Right.
Are you available that we could call you or contact you if we need clarification? Is all I'm asking.
I will be available until the 2nd of November. And then I'll be going to, that's why I said, "I'll make sure you get it this week."
Okay, will you be back on the 18th, by the way?
I will be back the 16th. Be in Aruba.
Good time.
And I will be, have plenty of time. I will have my computer with me.
Are you fixing a drainage problem in Aruba?
Yes. I, believe it or not, I did look at a project in Aruba. They had a serious problem where they were building the landfill and I'm trying to think what the name of the company is in New Bedford. They took the tires, they re-cycled tires. I think it's Roland, not Roland, but it's another company. But anyway, they bailed them and they used it along the water edge and it protected that shore. So I wasn't, not involved in it, but I sat down with them there and I had a great time. And again, like I said, I would volunteer my time, whatever it takes, at no cost to the town, although I would like to bring it here because I've offered it to the highway department since, other information, and was not accepted. So I will make sure you get it. I sent you a letter today. You should be receiving it. It's in the mail and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
And all this letter is just to let you know who I am.
Thank you, Mr. Rainey.
And a few accomplishments that I did and so that you'll know-
Thank you.
...exactly what I'm talking about. In fact, I used to predict the weather with Dr. Harwich. I think someone here can, Mr. Galvin can verify that. Predicting the weather with snowstorms.
Absolutely.
And that's because I listen to the OP and I was always willing to listen. And that's why I'm here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.